Morning. A little bit harder. All right, good morning. Time. The time is 9:31 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting scheduled for October 14, 2025 is called to order. Are there any items the board members would like to add or delete to today's agenda?
Ms. Chairwoman, I wish to amend the meeting agenda to add a resolution under Discussion and Action Items as letter J, and I do wish to read that resolution into the record. The title of the resolution is Michigan Board of Education Resolution to Stop the Health Education Standards and Affirm Parental Rights Established by Supreme Court Precedent in Mahmood v. Taylor. Whereas Mahmood v. Taylor of June 2025 decided in favor of parents who challenged a Maryland school district's curriculum involving the introduction of LGBTQ+ storybooks into elementary school curriculum and set precedent that public schools must allow parents to opt their children out of any instructional content that conflict with their sincerely held religious beliefs. Whereas this same Supreme Court decision also went beyond curriculum and materials related to gender identity and sexuality, the court held that denying parents the ability to opt out substantially interferes with the religious development of their children and defined the Free Exercise Clause of our Constitution as it intersects with public education present day. Whereas this court ruling provides the boundaries with which departments of education should adhere to in developing health education standards, any framework, or any other communications or guidance to local districts in choosing curriculum for any instructional purpose in public education, and to ensure there is no violation of the Constitution of the United States and the fundamental unalienable rights protected in that Constitution. Whereas Michigan compiled law regarding requirements for a high school diploma, students must complete health education aligned with guidelines developed by the department and approved by the State Board of Education. Whereas Michigan law requires a separation of sex education and health education to provide for the local control and opting out of such instruction. Therefore, be it resolved, the Michigan Board of Education finds that the following standards currently presented before the public for comment by the Michigan Department of Education are a violation of the United States Constitution and the fundamental rights protected in that Constitution as recognized by the Supreme Court precedent set in Mahmood v. Taylor and should not be included in the health education standards or framework required for graduation with a high school diploma in the state of Michigan. The following objectionable standards are such: 6th through 8th grades, 8.2.1, define gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, and explain that they are distinct components of every individual's identity. 8.2.2, explain how biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression are distinct concepts and how they interact with each other. Again, this is 6th through 8th grades. 8.2.3, explain that romantic, emotional, and/or sexual attractions can be toward an individual of the same gender and/or different genders, and that attractions change over time. 8.4.1, analyze the similarities and differences between friendships, romantic relationships, and sexual relationships, and discuss various ways to show affection within different relationships. 8.4.SH, identify valid and reliable sources of information and resources to inform and support sexual health decisions. 8.4.4, analyze personal and family values related to relationships, sexual behaviors, and sexual health. 8.5.3, examine various considerations, example, personal and/or family values, cultural and societal norms, and beliefs for determining emotional readiness for sexual behaviors. 8.5.4, describe how sexual health values and priorities may change with age, maturity, knowledge, and responsibilities. And finally, in 9th through 12th grades, 12.4.1, examine aspects of various personal relationships, including characteristics of healthy and unhealthy family, peer, romantic dating, and/or sexual relationships. Various resources are at the bottom, including MCL, the Supreme Court opinion, and of course the health education standards that are referenced in the resolution. And I wish to add this to our agenda to discuss well before we even continue with the classic timeline that we've seen with the Department of Education in receiving public comment, cherry picking the public comment, presenting it to us, we just rubber stamp it, and it's off. So I would really like to be able to discuss these particular standards before we even get to that point.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Is there any discussion on placing this item on the agenda?
Well.
Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I mean, I just think this is important. You know, we were just presented these last month. I think there's a large outcry from the public that these are inappropriate, they continue the agenda of, for example, boys playing the dangerous practice of boys playing in girls' sports, and just the confusion that it brings to children in the classrooms, and that it blurs the line between sex education and health education, and makes it so that -- and it's purposeful, and I think it's planned, and I think it's something that we should discuss and reject and have this start all over again. So I think that's -- it's appropriate to discuss it now.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other discussion? Hearing is seeing none. Ms. Evans, will you take a roll call vote? Bullock?
Against my better judgment, I'm gonna let the discussion happen so that we can get rid of some of these misnomers.
Lipton?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are there any other items to add or delete to today's agenda?
Yes, I have a--
Dr. Robinson.
I'd like to move a resolution on supporting and endorsing the Invest in Michigan Kids proposal. And if you don't mind, I'll read it into the record.
Okay, maybe we have a second. Mr. Senator Bullock, thank you.
Thank you. A resolution to support and endorse the Invest in My Kids proposal. Whereas the Michigan State Board of Education acknowledges that Michigan's public schools are the cornerstone of our communities and the foundation of our children's future, and whereas the Michigan State Board of Education believes strong public schools attract families, boost property values, and strengthen the workforce benefiting everyone, and whereas Michigan's public schools are underfunded by $4.5 billion, and more than three-fourths of all Michigan public school students attend schools in districts that are over 2,000 per pupil below adequacy, and whereas funding for Michigan's School Aid Fund has significantly decreased over the last two decades, and between 2015 and 2022, seven studies found Michigan does not provide enough money for the state's public schools, and whereas in the 2021-2022 school year, Michigan offered the lowest starting teacher salary in the Great Lakes region, and whereas the top 1% of earners in Michigan pay a lower effective tax rate than everyday people pay, 5.7% for the top 1% versus 7.1 to 9.7% for the bottom 80%, and whereas the lifetime earnings of Michigan's current K-12 students could increase by $27 billion if their educational achievement matched the national average, and whereas a 10% increase in per pupil spending improved low-income students' graduation rates by seven percentage points and their adult hourly wages by 13%. Therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education hereby endorses the Invest in My Kids proposed amendment to the Michigan Constitution to impose a 5% fair share surcharge on annual taxable income over $1 million for joint filers and over $500,000 for single filers, to raise funds for career and technical education, reducing class size, and attracting and retaining educators in public schools across the state, and is subject to an annual audit.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any discussion on this item? Hearing is seeing none. Ms. Evans? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended today? Dr. Robinson.
So moved.
Second. Lipton. Any discussion on today's agenda? Hearing is seeing none. Ms. Evans? Bullock? Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder? Motion passes. All right, at this time, Ms. Evans, the state board executive will introduce members of the state board. Ms. Evans?
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Sue C. Carnell, chairperson of the state board and interim state superintendent. To her left around the table is board president, Dr. Pamela Pew from Saginaw, board co-vice president, Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB delegate, Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, Ms. Nikki Snyder, Mr. Corey Rosser, the 2025-26 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and Ms. Emma Young, the governor's K-12 policy advisor ex officio. And now seated to my right at the table is Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, board treasurer, Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, board secretary, Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township.
Thank you. And good morning again to everyone, and everyone seated out in the audience. It's a pleasure to see you. The public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 PM. If you have green sheets, you may give them to Ms. Huesberry. Thank you. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage. Their webpage is michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete the green public comment form, which can be found in the entrance of this room, and these instructions can also be found on our webpage, michigan.gov/MDE. The first item on today's agenda is Item A, a presentation of student music performance. This presentation will feature a video of students' performances from two Michigan classrooms. Period. I'd like to welcome our presenters, Dr. Michelle Harmela, deputy superintendent, Division of Educator Excellence, and Career Technical Education, Special Education, and Administrative Law; Ms. Kelly Rozansky, director of the Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Sean Kotke, education consultant, manager, Office of Education Excellence; Dr. Gina Gardner, higher education consultant in the same office; and Ms. Angel Ingram, she's a K-5 music teacher at U Prep School. Presenters, this is an informational presentation. No board action is required at this time.
Dr. Carnell, and thank you, board. It's our pleasure to bring a presentation to you this morning of the students. We had to bring them by video. We were unable to bring them in person. We have a student music group as well as an orchestra, which you can picture trying to fit in the room, so we brought them to you by video, and they were performances done last school year. Many of our music teachers are still preparing students at this time of year, and weren't quite ready to present in front of the board. This afternoon, our team will present revised standards for the preparation of music teachers before opening them up for public comment. These standards outline the preparation of music teachers at all grade levels. In many cases, a single music teacher serves all students in their district, providing instruction in voice and various instruments that might make up an orchestra, for example. I'd like to introduce Angel Ingram, the K-5 music teacher at University Prep School in Detroit. She will introduce the recorded sessions you're about to see.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Angel Ingram, and I am the founding music teacher of University Prep Science and Math Elementary School in Detroit under the leadership of Bianca Morgan. In 2024, the performance that you'll see was directed by my student teacher, Adrienne Cafarello, who is a graduated student now of the University of Michigan. She chose to encourage our students to explore the world of jazz, and they absolutely fell in love with it. Here you'll see our first graders will perform Blue Skies by Irving Berlin. Ms. Cafarello successfully completed her student teaching under my mentorship, and she chose to stay at our school for the remainder of last school year to fill a third-grade vacancy as a long-term sub and to provide normalcy for our students when that vacancy was open. She is currently pursuing her master's in flute performance while teaching music in Virginia, so I hope you all enjoy our performance of our first graders.
Not celebrate that, right? I'm gonna let Angel introduce the second group.
In 2025, the South Haven instrumental music boosters commissioned a piece by composer Katie O'Hara-Labrie to celebrate music in South Haven. The piece was premiered at the Spring Orchestra Concert on May 8, 2025, and featured the South Haven High School Orchestra under the direction of Jessica Fiderovitch. South Haven is a school district along the lake shore that has undergone serious economic challenges. It is a rural community with a high percentage of students living at or below the poverty level. Only one student in this group studies privately. The rest have all learned to play, read, write, and express musically in a large group setting. Despite these challenges, the people of the South Haven community and members of the school board value their strong tradition of music education and continue to support general music, band, orchestra, and choir because they understand the importance of access to music for their children. The piece you will hear this morning was performed under the working title, "South Haven Light." It will be published by Alfred under the title, Beacon in the Mist. The composer was inspired by the lighthouse on Lake Michigan that is an iconic symbol of South Haven and has written a musical journey that starts and ends near the lighthouse, a way to find home again through life's journey.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell and board. It's always a pleasure to bring students to you in whatever form we can do that.
Thank you, presenters. We appreciate your presentation, and the videos were priceless. We enjoyed them tremendously. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for our presenters today? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you so much for sort of uplifting this aspect of our schools and our young people. I think one of the things that I think we could all see from watching the video, but I definitely want to just uplift this aspect that for a lot of students, the academic, what we would call sort of like the classic sort of sitting and learning material can be challenging, and the ability to engage in other forms of learning, whether it's through music or art, things that a lot of school districts now call specials, I really think should be integrated into schools and give all students the opportunity because for a lot of students that I work with, particularly in the context of the promise zones, it's really music and some of these other disciplines that really bring them joy. And sort of, for some children, it might be athletics, but for a lot of students, the ability to participate in something that's bigger than themselves, whether it's an orchestra or jazz, or a lot of our schools, one school that I work with, they didn't really have the support to provide instruments to students, so they created a drum corps for the students, and that has become a very, very popular sort of activity. And when we do our annual event for the community, we uplift the students in the drum corps. So I really, really appreciate highlighting this, but if anyone of the presenters could sort of just speak to the ability to use, whether it's music, or art, or anything like that, to provide joy and engagement for students that may be hard to reach, I think that would -- I think that that would be -- I'd be interested in hearing more about that.
The answer, and thank you so much for bringing that up. So currently, my students, 3rd through 5th, are learning the elements of music, and I'm teaching them through movie soundtracks. And so through those, we're teaching the eight elements, and that's dynamics, tempo, which you heard for our first graders, is there's a significant tempo change in Blue Skies where they start very slow, and then they all of a sudden have to speed up, so they need to understand the math between that. So in my classroom, I'm very, very heavy on cross-curricular teaching, and as we're teaching these musical elements through movies, I'm also bringing in those ELA aspects of what story elements also look like. So they're not only getting music, but we're also learning ELA and math through what they think is just fun, but I'm supplementing with my homeroom teachers to make sure that our students are getting what they need in every aspect of our building.
And probably bringing a lot of joy--
Absolutely.
--in the process.
They are absolutely loving learning the music to Jaws and Jurassic World. Yeah.
Discussion or comments? Dr. Robinson?
First of all, thank you for bringing the videos, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I was so happy that in the first clip that we saw, we focused on a distinctly American art form of jazz. It was refreshing to hear that, especially with young children, because little kids are incapable of certain things, and every time you work with young children, you find out that's not true.
Correct.
So bravo to you for that.
Thank you.
And then I really appreciated the second clip that there was a mention that only one child on that stage had taken private lessons. I want to drill down a little bit on Ellen's point. The importance of school music is that not every child does have access to private instruction, expensive instruments. Sorry. I think everyone appreciated that it was off at the beginning. Not every kid does have access, you know, because of family resources, 100 other factors of private instruction, of expensive instruments, trips to cultural events. I mean, I came from a family of five. None of us had private lessons until I went to college and got my first private lesson as a music major. I don't think we can underestimate how important it is that-- I don't think we can underestimate how important it is that every child, and again, you showed a rural clip and an urban clip. A lot of the music programs that we see are in big suburban schools that have lots of resources and fancy equipment and nice facilities. And every kid, rural, urban, in-between, deserves access to a high-quality, comprehensive music education where those things are provided in the school system, by the school system, and not relying on private funds, on parents who happen to have the resources. So I appreciate the comprehensiveness of the presentation and of the videos. And just want to thank you again for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other?
What he said.
Senator Bullock. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I would just say that since almost nine years ago, when I got on this board, I've been fighting, and we found agreement across the aisle, on fighting against high-stakes standards, or high-stakes testing and the narrowing of the curriculum by focus, hyper-focusing on two or three subjects. And I had talked to superintendents and others where music gets crowded out. And it's a shame. And these are things that, you know, bringing joy, which Ellen mentioned, is something that's important. I remember I brought in Jung Zhao the first few months I was here. And he said, maybe instead of these high-stakes testing, we should see how quickly kids want to leave the school versus how quickly they want to come into the school. Maybe that is the good metric that we should be looking at, or at least one of them. So I applaud any time that we're focusing on music and acting and other, you know, other things that are not in the high-stakes testing realm.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Just curious, any board members play an instrument in high school? Dr. Pritchett, what?
Playing it up.
Senator Bullock?
I played the piano, strings, drums.
Very nice, Mr. McMillan. Anyone else? Dr. Robinson? Thank you. Thank you, presenters.
You're welcome. We'll see you again this afternoon.
See you this afternoon. All right, our next item is Item B, a presentation on student attendance and chronic absenteeism and student attendance support. This presentation will feature information on student attendance. The presenters will address the 2024-25 academic year data on Michigan K-12 student attendance, examine trends, and highlight local strategies for increasing attendance rates. Welcome, presenters. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, Division of Assessment, School Improvement, and System Support, and Mr. Tom Howe, Director of the Center for Educational Performance and Information. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required at this time. Welcome, presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell, and good morning, Board. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you on today regarding student attendance, chronic absenteeism, and student supports. As an overview, our focus today includes sharing attendance data trends specific to statewide rates and chronic absenteeism, both overall and by student groups. Additionally, we will share student supports and our next steps. And now Executive Director Tom Howe will highlight our attendance data trends. Tom?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Good morning. Thank you for asking SEPI to be present at your table today. I know data is not always the most exciting part of a conversation, but it certainly enlightens us about what is going well and where we have opportunities to lean in and do better. So keeping it brief, first we'll look at attendance overall and by subgroup, and then the prevalence of chronic absenteeism. And we'll get right into that with some definitions. For a student to be considered in attendance, they must attend half or more of the scheduled hours. For virtual learners, that means at least participating in their scheduled check-ins on a school day. Students who are not enrolled for at least 10 school days or those who are shared-time students coming from our non-public or homeschool environments are excluded from these particular calculations. Attendance rate is calculated as the total days attended divided by the total days possible for a particular period of time. Looking at key numbers and percentages for school year '25, Michigan attendance rate continues to move in the right direction. That particular year, the statewide attendance rate reached 91.3%, making a positive increase of a half a percent from the prior school year. While the statewide rate continues to improve, attendance variation among groups is still varied. The variance is particularly acute for homeless students whose rate of 83.8% is 7.7% lower than the rate of students who did not experience homelessness. The statewide attendance rate was 91.3%. As we can see in this particular graph, in the years leading up to the pandemic, Michigan had a stable attendance rate that averaged about 93%. And we'll consider that our baseline for today. In school year '22, that represents the lowest point on the graph, which was about 90 and a half percent. Since then, we've seen an upward trend, making this the third year of improvement, about a half a percent again this year, bringing the rate nearly halfway back to the pre-pandemic average of 93%. As in past years, we'll take a look at attendance data through the lenses of economic disadvantaged status, English learner status, homeless, special ed, race, ethnicity, and foster care. If you were here for my talk last year, you might remember those are the categories that the U.S. Department of Education requires be reported nationally for ESA, IDEA, and Perkins. Of note, the metrics among both female and male students track very closely to that of total students, so I excluded that from the talk today. For students who are economically disadvantaged, the overall attendance rate improved by 0.6% to 89.1%. The gap between economically disadvantaged students and their peers did narrow slightly by 4.7%. However, the gap remains wider than prior to the pandemic. The rates for English learners and non-English learners have been relatively stable and high, both above 90%. The attendance rate for English learners improved by 0.6% last school year, while that of non-English learners improved by 0.5%. While that difference is slight, it marks only the second time in the last 10 years where English learners' attendance rate was lower than that of their peers. While the attendance rate of non-homeless students remained consistently high, generally 90%, the attendance rate for homeless students remains a bit lower. Homeless students' rate has been steadily increasing over the past three years. This year, the attendance rate improved by 1% to 83.8%. There is a narrowing of the gap between all students and homeless students. Back in 2023, I think the gap was about 8.3%, narrowing down to 8.2 in '24, and now at 7.7% in school year '25. So there is improvement happening for this population of students. Notice in the recent three years, the overall attendance rate has remained stable, both for students with disabilities and students without disabilities. Both special ed students and non-special ed students' attendance rates improved by 0.6% in the last school year. So nothing significant of note for this group this year. Overall, attendance rates remain stable or improve slightly among most racial, ethnic groups. Consistent patterns have existed over the last decade. American Indian students saw 0.4% improvement, reaching 89.7%. Our Asian students continue to mark the largest attendance rate seen among all racial, ethnic groups at 93.3%. African-American students saw the largest improvements this year of 1.1%, also reflecting an upward trend for the last three years. They currently sit at 86.9%. Hispanic, two or more races, and white students showed small but steady increases, all reaching attendance rates at or above 90%. Our Hawaiian students' attendance rate stayed flat at 90 and a half percent. All right. Finally, looking at this last group, students who are in foster care. Their attendance rate has shown slight improvement in recent years, increasing by 0.6% from 2023 to present at 87.3%. Students that are not in foster care are consistently higher and have shown more improvement of about 1% year over year. So students in foster care are not faring as well in recovering from pandemic learning in terms of their attendance than their peers. All right. Next, we're going to look at an alternative measure. This particular measure, chronic absenteeism, is the metric that is collected by the U.S. Department of Education. It is really looking at the depth of attendance challenges for different students and groups throughout the country. A quick definition shows that students must enroll for at least 10 consecutive school days. So this does exclude your highly mobile students that might hop from school to school. And it does make sure that the students counted in the metric are those that miss at least 10% of their school days. Can't put a number on that, right? Because not all students attend, not all students attend the same number of days in each school that they participate in the learning environment for. There have been three consecutive years of improvement since the peak of the pandemic, where chronic absenteeism was at 30.8%. This year, the rate fell by 1.6% to 27.9%. While these percentages are moving in the right direction, they're still above the pre-pandemic average of 18.4%. It's a fairly dramatic difference in chronic absenteeism. This table is intended to show the range of student attendance rates over the last seven school years. Chronic absenteeism considers only whether students are in the greater-than-90% row. So you'll see here that about 70% of our students were there for 2024-25. There was a precipitous drop-off back in 2022, the height of the pandemic, and a steady climb back ever since. We haven't returned to the pre-pandemic level. We're about 8% below that, the benchmark being about 80% that you saw emerging in 2019 through '21. All right. So let's look at the student groups as we did with attendance. Looking at special trends for economically disadvantaged students, the chronic absenteeism rate hovered around 25% from 2016 to 2020. The rate then jumped to 50.4% in 2022 during the pandemic. Since then, we've seen a steady decline, dropping to 38.6% in 2025. That's an 11.8% decrease since the pandemic, so we're moving in a good direction. For students that are not economically disadvantaged, the trend is similar, but on a smaller scale. The rate remained stable at around 10% before a sharp increase to 24.9% in 2022. Non-economically disadvantaged students, chronic absenteeism declined with a rate of 15.8% in '25, which was a 9.1% decline since the pandemic. The gap between those two groups continues to narrow. Over the last three years, chronic absenteeism has been steadily improving for both English learners and other students, with English learners declining 1.3% and non-English learners declining by 1.6% last school year. English learners had slightly higher chronic absenteeism than non-English learner students, but the gap is relatively small, right at around 3% between those two groups. Students experiencing homelessness have consistently shown much higher rates of chronic absenteeism than students who are not homeless. Although we see some improvement in homeless student absenteeism rates, 2.8% reduction last year, it's still nearly double that of their peers. The homeless chronic absenteeism rate decline of 2.8% surpasses that of the non-homeless decline of 1.7. So we are closing that gap this year by about 1.1%. And then overall, chronic absenteeism is trending downward for both groups of students with disabilities and those without. The gap is roughly 8% to 10% in recent years. Chronic absenteeism rate for students with disabilities exceeds the state average. A reminder, that was 27.9%. They exceed that by about 8%. And this year, all racial, ethnic categories saw an improvement from prior year, but disparities still exist. The largest improvement was seen in the African-American student population of 3.4%. The lowest improvement was seen in our Hispanic communities by 0.7%. Asian students still show the lowest absenteeism rates across school years and is continuing to decline. They declined by 1.3% year over year. However, the current rate of 20% exceeds their low point, which was 12.7%. So more room to do with all of our students across all spectrums. African-American students have the highest chronic absenteeism rates across the years, reaching 48.2%. However, we stated earlier that this group saw the largest attendance rate improvement of 1.1%. They also had the largest chronic absenteeism rate improvement of 3.4%. And then our final group, students in foster care, also demonstrates higher chronic absenteeism rates than students that are not in foster care. Despite students in foster care seeing improvement of 1.5% from last year, their rate remains 15% higher than students that are not in foster care. Unlike most groups, we are not seeing a narrowing of the gap between students in foster care and their peers. It's something that we need to continue to work on. This particular slide, it's a little tricky, but this brings together both metrics, attendance rate and chronic absenteeism. The solid line represents the attendance rate overall. That's the middle line on the graph. Recall in '25, nearly 27.9% were chronically absent, which is almost 1 in 3 students. They are represented here in the dash line. That's at the bottom. Students who are not chronically absent are represented with the dotted line. That's at the top. So as you might expect, when we compare attendance rates between groups, we see there is a gap present. Chronically absent students attend school only about 79.4% of the time. Students that are not chronically absent, they attend at a much higher rate. They're attending at a rate of about 95%, which is quite a bit of learning opportunity missed by your chronically absent students. And then to summarize and just wrapping up the numbers, thank you for staying awake. Most student groups saw modest increases this year. African-American students showing the largest increases at 1.1%. Economically disadvantaged students narrowing their attendance gap by 0.4%. And English learner absenteeism improvement of 1.3%. Overall, the statewide attendance increased to 91.3% in school year '25. This is still below attendance rates prior to the pandemic, but we continue to close the gap to pre-pandemic average of 93%. And then finally, percentage of students who are chronically absent continues to decrease, falling to 27.9% for the prior school year. Now turn it over to Delsa to talk about the good things that are happening.
Thanks, Tom. The balance of the presentation today will share MDE's historical efforts to support attendance and student engagement, as well as current departmental and local school district initiatives. We will conclude with our next steps to support the field with research and evidence-based strategies that promote improved attendance with a focus on reducing chronic absenteeism. Our historical efforts, as shown here, include EWIMS, which stands for Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring Systems. Attendance Works, a national project to support local districts in addressing chronic absenteeism via action research, as well as the Federal Student Engagement and Attendance Center, Communities of Practice, Professional Learning for State Education Agencies, which provided guidance to MDE staff on how to strengthen internal efforts to better support local school districts as they strive to improve student attendance while actively reducing chronic absenteeism. Before sharing our current department efforts, we would like to highlight EWIMS and its direct benefits to Michigan. We are excited to highlight the MDE Attendance and Engagement Team, as well as, which was developed within the last year as an extension of MDE's participation in the U.S. Ed Student Engagement Center. I'm sorry. I need to go back. I'm sorry, I need to go back. We're focusing here on EWIMS. As a part of a secondary school's multi-tiered system of supports framework, the Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System, or EWIMS, can help educators systematically identify students who are showing signs that they are at risk of dropping out of school and make decisions about supports and interventions to help students get back on track for graduation. EWIMS has proven to be successful, as evidenced by research and its outcomes. The American Institutes for Research, or AIR, reports that after one year of implementation, EWIMS schools reduce the percentages of students identified as being chronically absent and experiencing course failure. With these proven outcomes, MDE has committed to supporting the field with this intervention model, EWIMS, by employing a total of 20 EWIMS coaches, who are available to provide training and implementations to support to schools and districts statewide. For the last school year, '24-'25, EWIMS coaches provided training to 43 identified schools. And now, we'll take a close look at our current departmental efforts. We have been intentional and expansive with current departmental efforts, which we will highlight in this segment. We are excited to highlight the MDE Attendance and Engagement Team, developed within the last year as an extension of MDE's participation in the U.S. Ed Student Engagement Attendance Center Communities of Practice. The team's purpose to coordinate, support ISDs, local and, as well as local school districts and individual schools, as they strive to execute efforts that provide an opportunity to engage students, which will improve attendance, reduce chronic absenteeism, and ultimately prevent truancy. As noted here on the screen, you'll see many staff members, many names. This is a unified team effort across MDE, which also includes external experts who conduct research on attendance and chronic absenteeism that we will also highlight today. An additional current internal effort is the Attendance Research Partnership through the Michigan Education Research Institute, or MARY. MDE has partnered with Wayne State University and the University of Michigan, Flint, for an intensive research partnership to study attendance and chronic absenteeism here in Michigan. The research team of the Attendance Research Partnership, in consultation with MDE, developed a survey that was disseminated to school principals by way of MDE's weekly communication in the spring of 2025. Reminders were also sent to glean or to get participation by way of a memo to the field. At the conclusion of the survey, we are happy to report that 1,143 survey responses were received, providing a comprehensive portrait of how Michigan schools address student attendance, illuminating the priorities, practices, systems, personnel, and perceptions that shape attendance-related work in Michigan schools. The partnership is ongoing, and we do want to emphasize that today. The current phase has positioned MDE's Attendance and Engagement Team, which we introduced to you by screen, to use the survey findings to further inform and refine the attendance guidance being developed for Michigan districts. The next phase of the partnership will involve a deeper examination of district-wide systems of support for improving attendance, utilizing case study protocols to develop a coordinated plan for direct outreach and support to Michigan districts. And now for local efforts. There are 263 districts that have identified as working with a coach to implement EWIMS, the Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System. The attendance data for the 2024-25 school year were compared with the 23-24 data for these districts. And our totals are as follows. 171 districts showed an increase in attendance rate, while 67 experienced a decrease, a slight decrease being defined as a less than 1% rate. 25 districts experience decreases in attendance rate higher than 1%. 169 districts showed an improvement in being chronically absent, while 91 experienced an increase, and 3 remained unchanged. 149 districts showed improvement in both their attendance rate and chronic absenteeism. We are highlighting today two specific districts that have intentional and dedicated efforts to improve attendance and reduce chronic absenteeism. To the left of the screen, we would like to highlight the School District of the City of Flint. Many of us know it as Flint Community Schools. Reports that it has fully implemented EWIMS. Their attendance rate, as noted on the left side of the screen, increased by 1.67 percentage points, rising from 76.58% in '23-'24 to 78.25% in '24-'25. The rate of chronic absenteeism decreased by 5.7 percentage points from '23-'24 to '24-'25, resulting in 416 more students attending school on a regular daily basis and being engaged in learning in Flint Community Schools. This is a milestone for the district, and we definitely applaud them today. To the right of the screen, we are highlighting and sharing today Lawrence Public Schools, who also saw improvements in both overall attendance rates and the rate of being chronically absent or chronically absent students. We wanted to highlight a smaller, more rural district example in comparison to an urban district. Lawrence's attendance rose 1.1 percentage points from 93.05 in '23-'24 to 94.06 in '24-'25. In terms of chronic absenteeism, they have seen a decrease of 2.2 percentage points, resulting in 14 more students attending school and being engaged in learning on a daily basis. Now, let's examine the strategies associated with, of strategies or efforts for both of those school districts. For the School District of the City of Flint, or Flint Community Schools, as referenced on the previous slide, they have successfully implemented EWIMS district-wide. Through this effort, academic progress monitoring is in place with consistent feedback. In partnership with local agencies and businesses, the district has developed a family engagement program to ensure resources and ongoing support between the school and the home setting. The School District of the City of Flint attributes their success not only to EWIMS, but also to its Strive for Five Citywide Attendance Campaign, encouraging students, as well as their parents and caregivers, to be in space, in-school, learning five days of the week. This effort is coupled with dedicated student success coordinators. To the right of the screen, Lawrence Public Schools, we share their efforts. Very similar to Flint, Lawrence executed business and industry partnerships. Their efforts here resulted in improved housing opportunities. Many families reported that they needed to leave the area due to housing, and because of the community's efforts, they were able to return to Lawrence Public Schools. Lawrence also surveyed and learned from their stakeholders that there was a need to implement alternative learning options, including virtual and hybrid scheduling, to improve the flexibility for attending school. A highly commendable act on the part of the district's leadership was the reduction of administrative positions to employ more student staff for direct student services, which includes monitoring attendance through check-in protocols for students with current or past high rates of chronic absenteeism. And last, but certainly not least, similar to Flint's efforts, Lawrence Public Schools also implemented a citywide attendance campaign using social media as the mechanism to engage students and their families. MDE anticipates, in terms of next steps, the release of the Student Engagement and Attendance Guidance Document and the Graduation Rate Increase Guidance for Elementary Students, supporting students to and through graduation, ensuring a solid foundation begins in elementary school. We are excited to report today that both of these documents are targeted to be released later this fall. We appreciate the opportunity to share the data, efforts, and planned supports. Along with next steps, we're increasing attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. Thanks again, and now back to you, Dr. Carnell.
Edman, and thank you, Mr. Howe. Board members, do you have any comments or questions for our presenter, Senator Bullock?
Presentation, I'm always curious about some numbers. And so, while the data sounds, the first thing was, what is the definition, according to this, for the unsheltered or homeless population? And what's the definition for economically or socio-economically challenged in the presentation?
So, economically disadvantaged in Michigan is determined by participation in a number of factors. It can be free and reduced-priced lunches, SNAP, TANF, migrant education, and homelessness. So those are the particular programs from which we get information, both from a combination of school district reporting and also from direct certification against the Department of Health and Human Services records associated with the households that students live in.
So already data that's out versus, because for me, homelessness or unsheltered is non-traditional now, right? If I'm a couch surfer, I'm homeless. And then, do we have any data correlating? I know it's only been one year, or the increase in attendance or decrease in chronic absentee due to free breakfast and lunch now?
We have not studied that yet at SEPI. I don't know if the department has taken a look at that yet. Not yet. Not yet.
Those are just numbers. Just curious about numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to just ask you about the EWIMS coaches. I think that the coaching model is a really powerful model, particularly in serving our most vulnerable students. And you talked about 20 EWIMS coaches, and you listed them. From the standpoint of capacity, is, do you feel like that's enough? Or do you feel that you could do more if you had more coaches?
We could always do more with more coaches. The way that we have the model set up, we reach out to districts and we encourage districts to train within, so it's almost like a trainer-trainer model, where MDE will continue to provide the support to those districts, who then, within the district, they train within the schools. So it's kind of like a domino or trickle-down effect. Could we use more and then spread that more across the state? Sure, but right now, we want to train within districts, so they then train within schools.
Love that, the trainer-trainer model. That's great when you have limited capacity. So just to be clear, what I heard you say is that sort of the on-ramp would be that you reach out to school districts based on observation of the data purportedly, and then make the suggestion or the offer of services. Is there also an on-ramp for school districts that sort of themselves notice a problem and then contact the department for assistance? Or is it always the department sort of reaching out to the districts?
That's a great question, Ms. Lipton. What we do is, by way of our communication through our Thursday comms, we try to remind districts that EWIMS is definitely a strategy that could improve attendance. And oftentimes, when we send out those reminders and provide guidance that we have, we do have districts to reach out directly to us, so it's very systematic and cyclical. We also incorporate the use of EWIMS and encourage districts as they are going through their individual school continuous improvement process with MYKIP. EWIMS can actually be one of the strategies that they embed into their overall plan for improvement.
And then just lastly, I just wanted to highlight, in both the examples that you used, Flint and then Lawrence, there were strategies that were employed that I think are really, really tried and true strategies. And the notion of embedding student success coaches is an incredibly powerful model. I've seen it work, not just in improving attendance, but also in student engagement throughout school, in our promise zones, which are all embedded in probably 13 of the most economically distressed school districts in the state. I mean, that was one of the definitions to become a promise zone, is that a very high portion of the students, in excess of 75 or 80%, need to be in the district on free and reduced lunch. And then, I was really interested in the Lawrence school model, where they clearly have utilized the community assets that they have to engage community partners to address what could be a real problem amongst the chronically absent population, which is transportation or literally the physical ability of a student to get from point A to point B. So dealing with the larger issue of homelessness, or even just proximity of housing, I think. And I think that overall model of the full-service community school strategy, where you look at this school building as sort of an asset in your community, and try to engage community partners to create a healthier, more holistic experience for the child, I think is a really powerful model. I mean, it does cost more money oftentimes, because you actually, you know, each one of these community, what did I, these student success coordinators, when we employed them in our promise-owned schools, I mean, that's additional FTEs that you're bringing into the school, and people that, you know, need to be paid to do that work. And sometimes I think schools are reticent to hire non-instructional helping professionals, because, you know, obviously, it's scary to do that, but it's really a very, very powerful model. And so, thank you for uplifting that.
Thank you.
Dr. Pugh?
And I'm sure that this will come up during the legislative agenda item later today, but having this conversation reminds me that there is policy related to incentives going away. That might have been just related to Count Day? Or is it related to incentives to reduce chronic absenteeism, improve student attendance? I don't know if you're familiar with that, and...
We are still unpacking some of those changes. Dr. Pugh, however, you're correct, the incentive will be monitored. It should not be, and we have noticed in our review of current budget that we will be impacted somewhat in terms of being able to expand EWIMS coaches, but we are working with districts and districts... But we are working with districts, and districts will be able to contract or connect directly with the department to still receive those services. So we're already looking at how we can manage and work that out.
Oh, yes, currently, the law that state or the new budget that passed, this stated that there should not be any incentives for Count Day.
Okay.
But we will check on the additional days that related to attendance.
Okay, so we don't know, but it could possibly impact the improvement that we're seeing? And I don't know if we know of a justification for that?
Right now, it's just for Count, as I'm aware, it's just for Count Day.
Okay.
Not so much for attendance.
Yeah, okay. Another question that I have, just different LEA efforts that we've seen. I know that we have different districts, including Flint and the other district that we were monitoring. But looking at transportation as well, especially as the distance that students have to go to get to classroom or to get to school has expanded. How have we looked at transportation? How some of those efforts, I know that those have been some of the efforts underway by, I think, Detroit? And what have we seen there?
As noted with the Strive for Five campaign in Flint, Dr. Pugh, there are many districts that partner with their local transit services, and they are many times partnering where they can modify schedules, put in extra stops to help and make sure that transportation is not one of the barriers in hindering students from getting to school.
And just one other thing I think about when we look at the definition of economically disadvantaged, maybe students don't show up in that, in those numbers. But how do we look at parents who are stretched and are working multiple jobs? Or ALIS population, but it's difficult to get their students to school, especially if they're a single adult household. But just thinking about how those people may be working multiple jobs to not be economically, show up on that economically disadvantaged spectrum. But how does that also impact? And I think that that's a broad grouping of people.
I'm going to jump in and say that's one of the beauties of E-Whims, that it looks at individual students. It doesn't quite categorize them and say, hey, we have an early warning that something's happening with this particular student. And the student doesn't necessarily have to be economically disadvantaged. And then they wrap their arms around them and try to find out. But that's an excellent point. Ms. Snyder, and then Dr. Robinson.
I want to confirm my understanding of the previous conversation about the incentives. They're for Count Day, you said, not for attendance.
That's what I believe, but I will verify.
Okay. And then there are, how many districts in the state of Michigan? 500 and...
Around 830, if we include public school academies.
So if we, so on slide 35, if you can go back to it, are we holding that up against the backdrop of the total number of districts?
Total number of districts, yes.
Okay, very good.
Dr. Robinson, thank you.
I know we're here to talk about Michigan's schools and attendance rates. But I think it makes sense to add a little context here. I teach at Michigan State. We see some of the same trends in higher education, with students missing class, with students being absent. We see some of the same trends in society, where people since the pandemic simply have not come back to public meetings and group events. There are books that have been written about it. There was a book written a few years ago called Bowling Alone, that decried the lack of bowling leagues across the country, and that people still wanted to bowl, but they didn't go in groups. They went by themselves. We don't go to the movies like we used to, et cetera, et cetera. So I only add this context because I worry sometimes that when we drill in on an issue like, you know, chronic and absence from schools, we think of this as a school problem. And it's a much larger problem that we have to deal with. It is our responsibility to address it in schools, and I thank you for bringing the data to us. I'm not a data guy, Tom, so I appreciate that you are. But I think we also have to look at it in a broader context, that this is not just something that is affecting children and schools, it's also affecting society in general, higher education, the workforce. There are people that are missing work more often than they used to as well. So I think we just need a larger context for it so that we don't, you know, try to pin, you know, pin the tail on the donkey here of the schools being the cause of the problem. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
All right. Seeing now other hands raised. Thank you, presenters.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Item C, a presentation on the Budget Updates. We'll feature information on the status of the fiscal year 2026. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Business, Health, and Library Services; Mr. Spencer Simmons, Director of the Office of Financial Management; and Ms. Olivia Ponte, Legislative Liaison Office of Public and Governmental Affairs. Welcome, presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. Good morning, board. It's great to be with you to talk about the fiscal year 2026 budget, which we have now had officially for seven days. And excited to share what that looks like. As always, we present our information in context of our eight state strategic education plan goals. So that's what we will be doing today. And we will start with Goal Eight, which is to provide adequate and equitable school funding. You will see that in all cases, we have a foundation allowance that is $10,050 per pupil, no matter which type of school a child attends in the state of Michigan. And this is a line graph just demonstrating that increase in what that per-pupil foundation allowance has looked like since 2020. Also in Goal Eight, we have economically disadvantaged students funding in Section 31A. This is often called the at-risk funding. It was a $258.7 million increase, which is about 25% over what it was last year. We also had a $28.5 million increase for our students with disabilities. This is our Special Education, Section 51E. And a $566,200 increase for our students in our most rural and isolated districts. Next up, we have our English language learners. This is Section 41. It's a $12.5 million increase, also a 25% increase. And we have our partnership districts. So these are our districts that get the most support from the department. It is level funded in Section 21H at 6.1 million. But please remember, in FY24, we were provided with 36 million, which was to be spread over three years. So that is 6.1 plus the additional 12 million from that FY24 allocation. And then we have $125 million for the cost of transportation. This is level funded. An additional $130 million was deposited into the School Transportation Fund, but then some was taken out to meet that $125 million number. And that leaves $105 million in that School Transportation Fund. These funds are non-recurring. Next, we have a new section, Section 12E. These are competitive infrastructure grants. So $100 million for competitive grants to address infrastructure needs in our highest need schools. Those infrastructure projects must relate to HVAC or roofing. The district must demonstrate that they have no ability to issue bonds, or they've tried and have not been able to be successful. And they must have been a part of the statewide school facility study, which Mr. Steve Ezekian had been here a couple of months ago talking about with all of us. It's important to note, if you can go back real quick for me. It's important to note that $83.4 million from the School Consolidation and Infrastructure Fund was taken out of that fund and deposited into the State School Aid Fund. Thanks, Olivia.
All right, so moving on to Goal Seven, to increase the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage. The legislature approved $25 million in funding, this is level funded from the previous fiscal year, for the My Future Educator Fellowship Program. There's a new section in 27B that provides $70 million in funding for tiered grants for grow-your-own-and-teacher-retention programs. And then additionally, the legislature continued to level fund the My Future Educator student-teacher stipends. Moving on to Goal Three, to improve the health, safety, and wellness of students, we have $201.6 million for the Michigan School Meals Program. So this is $200 million continued from last year for traditional LEAs and PSAs serving breakfast and lunch. And then there's an additional $1.6 million in general fund for non-public schools who are already serving breakfast and lunch. Continuing with Goal Three, there's a total of $321 million for mental health and school safety. This is Section 31AA. Of that $321 million, 300 is for public schools, and 21 million is general fund for non-public schools. Then $214 million is for per-pupil payments. These are grants to districts for the allowable uses that the legislature approves of in the language of the law. And then additionally, there's $53.5 million in one pot for competitive grants to hire SROs, and then one pot to hire mental health professionals. The last slide on Goal Three I'll just mention is there is new boilerplate language in Section 31AA that requires districts to agree to be part of a comprehensive investigation in the case of a mass casualty event. And I will hand it over to Spencer.
Thank you, Olivia. Under Goal Number One, expanding early childhood learning opportunities, there's a $28.25 million increase or a 4.5% increase for the Great Start Readiness Program, Section 32D. This is managed or administered by MyLeap. There was a reduction in funding for GSRP longitudinal study, classroom setup grants, and the elimination of the GSRP marketing funding. Over the, I'm sorry, you go back one. Over a four-year period, it's a $359.1 million increase from 2022 to FY26. Thank you. Also under Goal Number One, a $23.67 million maintained funding under Early On, Section 54D. This is also administered by MyLeap. There's a new section, Section 32T, in the amount of $25 million for three-year-old GSRP pilot program. The emphasis of this particular section is for current funding, current programs such as looking at part-day, five-day-per-week, multi-age grouping under GSRP, and inclusion. Under Goal Number Two, improving early literacy achievement, there's $70 million to improve education outcomes and literacy. Of that, from last year, from 2025 to 2026, there was a reduction in $17 million in this funding. The breakdown for the $70 million consists of $64.4 million for grants to districts to purchase high-quality literacy materials, $4 million allocated to Go-Gibb-Antinugan ISD for Literacy Essentials, professional learning, and regional lead literacy coaches. And then $1.6 million is allocated to MIMTSS Technical Assistance Center. Under Goal Number Four, expanding learning opportunities for all students, there's $41.7 million for CTE programming, Section 61A. This is disbursement of funding to districts and ISDs for vocational programs. It is a $1.8 million increase or a 4.6% increase in funding. Under Section 61D, CTE incentive payments, $13.4 million or an $8.1 million increase in funding. This does increase the CTE per-pupil allotment from $35 to $88.
Additional opportunities within the State School Aid Act include $75 million for competitive grants for before and after-school programs, and $1 million to support the Michigan Education Research Institute that we call MARY. Some notable sections and things that were eliminated in this FY26 budget. The student loan repayment program, known as Section 27K, was eliminated, as was 10 cents a meal, early childhood block grants, early literacy added instructional time, the READ innovation competition, the feminine hygiene products for eligible students, and Project Search. Those were all eliminated in the FY26 budget. Section 164K is a notable section that I want to spend just a little bit of time on. It has five different pieces to it. And what it says specifically is, if the department is notified that a district is not in compliance, and then the department conducts an investigation and determines a district is not in compliance, then the department is required to withhold 5% of their state aid payments until the district comes into compliance. So what are those five items? The first one is that all food provided must meet federal nutrition guidelines. So all food provided for breakfast and lunch must meet those federal nutrition guidelines. Number two is, to the extent possible, districts must require households to complete the child nutrition and education benefits household application. This is important for those districts that are not a part of the community eligibility provision because CEP does not allow parents to fill out the application. They can only fill out the form. So for this one, that is only for those districts that are not a part of CEP. Number three is what you were talking about, Dr. Pugh and Dr. Carnell, earlier. A district shall not provide a financial incentive, financial incentive, to students to attend on Count Day. So a financial incentive in order to attend on Count Day. If the district provides a student survey, then that survey, those questions, and the results must be made public, posted on the district website, and parents are to be notified of the survey. And then the final one is if a district chooses not to use a curriculum from the department's list of evidence-based curriculum, that list will be provided in January of 2026. If they choose not to, then they must notify the parents of students in grades three through five that they are not using a curriculum that is evidence-based. They need to explain why, and they need to explain their plan and timeline for when a new curriculum will be adopted. That is all the new Section 164K.
All right, so you've definitely heard us talking at this table about the four literacy legislative recommendations that the department has had going into this budget process. And I'm happy to say there's been some positive movement on all four. So we had advocated for mandatory letters training for K-5 classroom teachers. And while it is not mandatory, the legislature did provide an additional $10 million for letters training in Section 35A. Additionally, we advocated for low class sizes in high-poverty K-3 classrooms. And the legislature approved a $65 million pilot program to lower the pupil-to-teacher ratio in high-poverty K-3 classrooms. And they also added an allowance for districts that received 31A funds to use up to 30% of those funds to lower the pupil-to-teacher ratio in their K-3 classrooms. The third of these four literacy legislative recommendations was to provide more funding for high-quality early literacy materials. This is the Section 35M grants that we see as an on-ramp to complying with PA 146, a full school year early. And the legislature appropriated $64.4 million to give districts another opportunity to apply for these grants. Last but not least was more in-person student instruction time. As we all know, state law requires 180 days of student instruction. There was nine forgiven days for conditions that are not within the control of school officials. But in 2019, the legislature permitted seven of these days to be counted as student instruction, even though if they were used for professional development for teachers. And that section remains. So there was no movement on that seven professional development days in this fiscal year 26 budget. However, the change that was made in 2023, allowing 15 virtual days to be permitted as in-person student instruction days, that change was completely reverted, and that 15 went down to zero. So zero days are now permitted to be, zero days are permitted to be counted as in-person student instruction and be conducted virtually. So that was a big win for students. The last item that I will share on is just a look at school aid in higher ed and community colleges. So in fiscal year 2025, 461.7 million... So in fiscal year 2025, $461.7 million was diverted from the state school aid budget to higher ed, and then another $461.7 to the community colleges budget. In this most recent budget, fiscal year 26, the legislature increased these amounts for a combined total of $420.4 million more. So 45.5% more funding is being diverted from school aid to post-secondary institutions for a grand total of over $1.3 billion.
Now onto the FY26 MDE budget. There were 568.5 full-time equivalent positions appropriated to the Michigan Department of Education. Within FY26, there are four brand-new positions. Two of those positions are to support Public Act 4146 for educators' preparation, programming to ensure professional development and implement instructional strategies. One position is to support CTE Pathways to Success programming, and then one FTE to support mental health training. Of the, I'm sorry. Within FY26, there were 10 unfunded FTEs that were removed from the department appropriation. So in total, you will see that 568.5 appropriated to the Department of Education. Also within FY26, there was $1,6400 increase for the Michigan Electronic Library System. Of that funding, one time is $900,000, and $106,400 is ongoing. There's $300,000 one-time funding for development, professional development, learning, and teaching artificial intelligence and media literacy. There's $150,000 one-time for mental health training, and then $150,000 one-time for foster care oversight. This is the implementation of PA 11 of 2024. There were reductions to the MDE budget. There was $750,000 reduced from Michigan core curriculum. This is also known as the Indigenous History and Culture. This money was originally appropriated or given in 2023, and it was supposed to be one-time funding. However, it was approved in 2024 and in 2025 for a grand total of over $2.25 million that was allocated to this program. There was a reduction or removal of $280,000 for teacher license renewal, and then there was $100,000 removal of the poet laureate. There were reductions of $500,000 in ASL literacy. This is for ASL literacy for the hearing and the deaf. The $500,000 that was removed does relieve, that does retain $500,000 in that fund. There was a $370,000 reduction in Renaissance Zone payments. The Renaissance Zone payments are to districts, ISDs, and to community colleges for reductions in their Renaissance Zones. By $370,000, what was taken out, the remaining balance is $1,830,000 in the Renaissance Zones fund line. The last slide that you see here, FY26 grants. There are a total of 115 total grants in FY26. In comparison to FY25, there were 149. That is a reduction of 34 grants or 23% of the grants. As you look at the grant types, you're going to see formula, designated, competitive, state aid direct, MyLeap grants, other in contracts. You're going to see a column or category for new grants. There are 24 new grants, according to FY26, as well as continuing from previous appropriations. There are 91 for a grand total of 115. You look at the overall total amount that is allocated of $21,873,778,100. When you look at the state aid direct, you're going to see that very first amount awarded or the amount being paid out for October, which will be processed as of October 20th, So in comparison or looking at that amount, that amount is 100% of the amount that is normally paid out for the October payment. So the state school aid unit was able to process that with having the budget recently approved.
Thank you. Dr. Carnell?
Thank you, presenters. I do want to add too, as it relates to our 149 grants, that the deputies are prioritizing those grants so that we can get them out the door as quickly as possible. We keep track of how many grants go out each month and where we are on our process for getting grants out the door. It is our diligent effort to make sure that we get grants into the hands of public schools in Michigan as quickly as possible. So thank you, presenter, board members. Do you have any questions or concerns? Dr. Pugh?
Look over my notes. The 10-cent meal, so that, does that eliminate our farmers, our local farmers?
It eliminates the additional funding, state funding provided too, in order to provide the local foods in the school meals, yes.
And how have we heard how that's impacting our local farmers?
I haven't heard dollar impacts, but we have heard anecdotally from the farmers that they are disappointed and that they hope to work with the legislators to try to bring it back in future years.
Okay. I mean, in addition to the nutritional value of having that direct farm to table, of course, we want to, we know that the economy impacts our children and the, how the economy impacts our farmers, impacts Michigan as well as our, our children as well. 35A5, I don't remember where that was. I think it was the early literacy, and just wanted to know a little bit about what that does. I think it was in the MyLeap budget. Oh, it's on page 2020, it's slide 22. Early literacy added instructional time.
Yeah, that's a grant, I mean, it is a per pupil grant to districts, and it allows, I believe, Dr. Chapman might have a better sense of this, but funding to cover the cost of additional coaching, not, this is different than the ISD literacy coaches line because that is still funded, but it covers the cost of added instruction time while we're getting additional supports for, like, professional development and other tutoring.
And I'm concerned as, as we look at our numbers and how we plan to address our literacy rates here in the state of Michigan, I'm just wondering if that impacts that.
Currently, we don't see a huge impact. Of course, any money not into that line item or in that section may not get us to where we want to go as quickly as possible. But with the additional monies that we have for the high-quality instructional materials under 35M and the pathway that we're heading for, Public Act 146, we believe that we have the tools necessarily to keep this train moving in that direction to provide support to districts in reading initiative, reading assessments, how to monitor those assessments, and how to provide intervention for those students who may have the characteristics of dyslexia and overall reading strategies.
Thank you. And just a couple more. The pilot for low class sizes, do we know, because it's three districts that we will be working with, or three, or did I get the number three right, or am I just pulling that down from somewhere? How are we going to determine who we're working with for, for that?
Yes, it's four districts.
Oh, four, okay.
So it's Wayne Westland, Flint, Benton Harbor, and Muskegon Heights.
Okay, thank you. And then the $1 billion that's being moved, that 45.5% increase, that goes to road infrastructure?
The...
Being...
For higher education?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a total of $1.3 billion that's in both community colleges and higher ed, but it's an increase of $420.4 million. So that's 420 million more than last year.
Okay. And the school response, have we heard from our 800-plus LEAs? The timing of getting the dollars in, or it looks like the grants are going to get in the door. Are they feeling better about that? Does this still give, does this give them enough time to be able to move forward with the plans that they, they've been able to map out?
The school community was very nervous when the budget hadn't been signed about getting their state aid payment in time for, you know, that they normally do. Now, there's some concerns over early childhood, but their state aid payment. So Spencer, Dr., I mean, Mr. Simmons pointed out today that our state aid payments would go out on time on October 20th. That is excellent news. And 100% of what normally goes out during October will be given to schools this month. So that's what their biggest concern, will we be paid on time? And the answer is yes.
Okay, so they won't have to scramble and rework plans that they had to rework because they weren't, the dollars weren't, it wasn't clear that the dollars were going to be there?
Well, I can't say that because I do know that coming up to October, some districts were a little nervous, and they had, usually we get the, I say "we" as a former superintendent, you know, we get the budget information early so we can plan our staff, how many second-grade teachers we need, or how many support staff we need. So coming into the school year already, they will have to, I suspect that many educators or superintendents will have to redo their budget.
Okay. So that'll be more to come.
More to come.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, any other board members? Ms. Lipton, Dr. Robinson, and Ms. Snyder?
So I just wanted to go back to the slide, and I don't see a number on it, but it's, the title of the slide is "School Aid in Higher Education and Community Colleges." And I just want to drill down on, in fiscal year 2026, the legislature increased these amounts by a total of 420.4 million or 45.5%, making the total amount of school aid fund going toward post-secondary institutions over $1.3 billion. Could you just, just give some historical perspective? And I would say maybe going back to, say, 2010 or so was when I think we saw the first time where a budget actually funded higher education out of school aid fund. And my recollection is that the thought was that that was going to be sort of a one-time sort of diversion, or the expectation was that it would be a one-time diversion to sort of deal with the imminent budget crisis in around, I think, maybe like 2020, maybe '08, '09, in that vicinity. That diversion has become not only more customary, but also larger. And I think that whether or not, you know, you agree with using the school aid fund to, to fund community colleges and higher education, I do think it's important to understand that the more that we do that, the more that I think we're going to have to deal with the, the notion of sufficiency in the school aid fund. Because as other things that traditionally had not been funded by the school aid fund, I mean, prior to that time, my recollection is that higher ed was funded through, generally through general fund, the general fund. And by shifting it to the school aid fund, I understand that it relieves pressure from general fund, general purpose dollars, but now you're increasing the pressure on the school aid fund. And it always occurred to me that it was a bit of a constitutional loophole because of the language which talks about, under Proposal A, that the school aid fund should be used solely for education, comma, including higher education. And so that sort of, that comma, including higher education, then became, you know, the truck that kind of just rammed through. My recollection, my understanding is that the, the, the idea was to at least use the school aid fund to reward programs in our K-12 system that were adding an additional year or two in K-12 to provide more voc ed programs or things like that. Maybe, maybe what our community colleges are doing now, there were some districts that were, it was more of a, like a K-14 system. And so the school aid fund wanted to have the flexibility to fund those programs. But now when you're putting such enormous pressure on the school aid fund to now fund our community colleges and our higher ed, could you speak a little bit about whether or not we may be creating too many pressures on our school aid funds such that sufficiency and adequacy within our school aid fund may need to be looked at?
I, I can. Absolutely, there is pressure on the school aid fund. There are many advocates who don't believe that the school aid fund should be used for higher ed. And with this increase, more and more advocates are saying that we really need to look at this. We know from several studies, and I know Dr. Rice had talked about this a lot, that schools overall are underfunded. And if we don't have the funds in the school aid, we can't provide the proper funding that schools need to operate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Two quick questions on the teacher shortage issues in the budget. One, I want to put in a plea for some legislative action to make the student-teacher stipends a permanent part of the budget and not something that we have to revisit on a yearly basis. The impact that those stipends have had on my students and I know students across the state and their families has been enormous. The, the threat of those stipends going away was sending a lot of families into financial tailspins earlier in the fall semester. People were counting on that money coming in, and then when it was perhaps not coming in, people were making very difficult decisions about how they were going to pay tuition, how they were going to get their kids through the last semester of their college education. So first of all, thank you to anyone who's listening that, that we did pass the stipends. But it would relieve a lot of pressure on people that were hoping to get into classrooms across the state if those stipends could become a more trusted source of income coming in for them. I know that when Dr. Pugh and I were at the NASB conference a year or two ago, that states that heard about Michigan having student-teacher stipends were envious, and I think it's something we should be proud of that we're doing. So there is just a plea, if any legislators are listening, or especially our friends who are working with legislators, to keep pushing for that to become a permanent part of the budget. And then the other issue is about reimbursement for MTTC, Michigan Test of Teacher Certification Tests. These represent not, not as large an investment as a student-teacher stipend, but recently we have doubled the number of MTTC exams that new teachers will be required to take to get certified in the state. One in general, kind of professional knowledge and skills, one in this content area for their certification. It used to be for a number of years, it was just one test. So that doubles the amount of money out of pocket that students have to pay to get certified after they've completed all of their collegiate requirements. And now the, the legislature has removed the reimbursement program from the budget. So it's kind of a double whammy. And I am getting lots of contact from students that, you know, this is an unexpected expense that they're going to have to incur right before they graduate, right before they enter the classroom. So anything we can do to either help them to try to reimburse that, those funds, or to find dollars to do that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Snyder?
I have a number of, of just, you know, some questions. So let me just start with, what I heard in the, the presentation was, well, we know there was previously $87 million in the literacy committee funds that were related to the high-quality instructional materials. So that's previous funding. And then I, I heard $70 million allocated again, and then I heard $64.4 million for literacy materials. Is that 64.4 within that 70 million, or is it 70 million plus the 64.4?
74, so if you look at the 64.4 million, the 4 million, the 1.6 million, that comes to the total 70 million. The 17 million was just highlighting from FY25. It was at 87 million.
Okay, so we had 87 million. We now have 64.4 million for literacy, 10 million for letters training, 65 million for high-poverty K through three classes for that pilot. So if I could just hone in on some questions in relationship to these numbers. You know, when we interviewed state superintendents before we hired Dr. You know, when we interviewed state superintendents before we hired Dr. Malako, I asked him if he supported reporting requirements in relationship to the specificity of these dollars, once they get to the local district. That, that the specificity of exactly how local districts are spending these dollars is available to citizens. Is that included with the dollars that you've just shared are allocated so far? Is that something that we included when we approved that budget?
I will say for Section 35M, absolutely, especially the 87 million that currently exists, that's already publicly available on what tier-one curricula, professional development, or intervention that districts chose to spend.
How much the curriculum costs in particular, how much they're putting into supports?
So the allocation that each district received, that whole allocation would be for the purchase of that curriculum. So the amount that each district received is publicly available?
And then districts are required to report exactly how they spent that money?
Yes, I mean, it is, they can only spend it on that one thing.
But they're required to report how they spent it, not just that they can only spend it, but that they actually did?
They provide us with a budget of, they provide us of the item that they're going to use in the budget of how they're going to spend it, and we allocate the funds.
Okay, because my understanding, I've had, I've had citizens from different areas of the state say they haven't been able to get this information. They've tried FOIA, and it's not available to them.
Not aware of any FOIA requests related to that.
Well, it's within their district that they.
Oh, I see, I see.
So there is not, I'm still hearing there isn't like a specific reporting requirement, even though we expect them to spend the money on that thing. There isn't necessarily a reporting requirement that they share that information with local citizens?
No, there isn't.
Okay. And Dr. Malako said he was, he just felt like it was tricky to do that, that that can be difficult to do. But I do think that that's what we need to see when we're, when we know our state is 44th in the nation in fourth grade literacy, and we know that we're pumping all of this investment and resources into increasing literacy, and that's what we should do, we have to follow it all the way to the end. Not just say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do it for this, but that we actually see that you did use it for that, and that's available to citizens. So I, because there's a lot, there's tens of millions of dollars we're putting into this, and that's the right thing to do, but we have to ensure that it actually is followed through all the way to the end. Further on the high-poverty K-3 district pilot, how many school districts are included in that pilot currently? And how many classrooms does it touch?
Four districts. I'm unsure of the number of classrooms.
Okay. How many districts above and beyond that, if we were to provide for the total number of high-poverty K-3 districts, would we need to consider if this pilot is successful?
Good question. We can get you that information, unless you know, someone knows off the top of their head, we can get you that information, Ms. Snyder.
So 65 million dollars is going to four districts for this pilot?
There could be more, but it has to go to those four. It depends on how many classrooms in those districts are needing the funds.
Okay, it would be helpful to have that information, just to understand exactly what, what the pilot's doing, and how you could even scale that eventually, because 65 million dollars to four districts is a lot of money. And understanding exactly how you would scale a ratio like this in, in the long term is important. I know we've talked about diversion to higher education. You know, when I look at those dollars, let me just make sure I'm clear on 461.7 million equally is diverted from the school aid budget to higher education, and, and then separately but equally to community colleges? So is the total, you know, 800 million?
And then they added the 420 million on top of that. Now, how they divided that 420 by higher ed or community college, I, I don't know, but it equals the 1.3 billion.
And what is the purpose of that diversion? Is it for CTE? Is it to ensure students have opportunities that aren't otherwise, or don't otherwise exist to scale within the district in K-12? What are we, you know, what was the discussion around the diversion of that, of those dollars?
I don't think there was a direct discussion of what the funding needs to be used for, it just adds to the general fund of the community colleges and higher education budgets.
So we just diverted hundreds of millions of dollars, and didn't, we didn't talk about why we were doing that, that there wasn't a discussion?
Ms. Snyder, Senator Bullock would like to interject, is that okay with you?
Is that okay with you?
Yes, it is, Senator Bullock.
I think there is a bit of misunderstanding. The legislature votes this budget up, it's not anyone in here voting up the budget.
No, I understand.
So they're making, they're making decisions without our say-so. Like, it has nothing to do with your thought process, or what you think is a good deal.
I'm not even sharing my thought process, even yet.
Thank you, Senator Bullock.
They're, they're making an autonomous decision over there under the dome, and then they're just telling us what we have.
So I was trying to understand the what and the why and the discussion around it from your perspective within the conversations that you've had, because you're here to give us a presentation on the budget, I assume that you have some sense of why that's happening, or you've been a part of the discussion? Or you've listened to what they've had to say in terms of the why? Because this is a bipartisan legislature that's putting forth this budget, so I, what, what is the why behind this?
So I'll start that conversation, if you don't mind. So normally when they divert money to higher ed and community college, they just say that community colleges and higher ed, they need more money. And the way they get more money is from our school aid fund. And they said, we needed more than you gave us last year, so the legislature gave them more than they did last year. What specifically is used for at the higher ed or community college level? There are no strings attached, they can use it for reducing tuition, they can use it for a number of reasons. But the legislature decided to give them, them being community colleges and higher ed, more money.
Okay. Certainly leaves more to be desired in terms of like information, this is why I'm asking the question, so.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Understood. In relationship to the budget and the teacher shortage, so what is the number that you, that the department would apply to the teacher shortage concurrently? Like, when we say we have a teacher shortage, what is the number of teachers that we want to, that we are saying, we are short this number of teachers?
I don't have that information either.
Okay, my next question would be, how long would it take to alleviate that number, and what would the effort be to do such a thing, but if we don't know that number?
We hear stories from, we hear information from some of our high-poverty districts about how difficult it is to get teachers. We know from our sub-permit, the number of, of districts asking for long-term subs because they are unable to hire a teacher, so we can get you that type of information. But normally we find a higher concentration of, of districts with, that service students in high-poverty areas that have this teacher shortage. So that's where we try to have these grow-your-own programs to help alleviate that.
So, I mean, I'm just going to be honest, you know, with a budget presentation, it doesn't matter how positive or how negative it looks, or presents, or whatever, you can't really draw things from it if you don't have this kind of information. I guess, I guess I'll just end with one question about, we mentioned investigation in relationship to safety. How is that prescribed legislatively? Do we have any information on what exactly that looks like? It says, in order to receive Section 31AA funding, a district must agree to be subject to and comply with the comprehensive investigation. Are we suggesting that there is no law right now that a district simply must do that, period? Without 31AA funding? Because I, I mean, I would argue that whether my child goes to any one of the 800-plus school districts in the state of Michigan, I would argue that a school district should be required to comply with that comprehensive investigation with or without funding. There should be no threat of funding, it should just be a requirement. So I'm just curious about what is the conversation around that? It's, it's very confusing to me that a mass casualty event can happen, and the only requirement in relationship to a comprehensive investigation into that event is if they've agreed to comply with it and get money in return for it. Is that what we're saying?
It's my understanding that the only place in which this requirement exists is the State School Aid Act, so they would be affirmatively waiving their privilege by agreeing to accept 31A funds.
I don't think that's accurate, because post-9/11, the federal government made it clear that the infrastructure bill that they passed required those EOP plans we've talked about so many times at the table. So to suggest that it's related to funding as opposed to a federal mandate that in fact is one of those basic things in relationship to national defense at the state level is very, I can't, like, I can't wrap my head around this, after all of the discussions we've had about safety at the table, that it would be attached to money as opposed to, this is what you must do in relationship to your emergency operations plans, and in order to keep kids safe. Because I don't want to have to, as a parent, go, hmm, I wonder if my school district was willing to comply with a comprehensive investigation if a mass casualty event occurs. That's, that's, I, I, I need more information about that, too, and understand exactly why it's attached to funding as opposed to in compliance with that federal mandate. And the thinking behind this is just flawed.
So noted, we'll try to get you that information, Ms. Snyder. Thank you. Any other board members? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Real quickly, 31AA funding, excuse me. That is non-recurring, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, so where it says, for example, 53.5 million competitive grants to higher school resource officers to be spent over a four-year period, if that does not, that funding doesn't reoccur then, then the district would have to take on the cost.
That's correct.
Again, just an example. Okay, thank you.
But it won't prohibit us from adding it to our legislative priorities next year?
No, I understand.
All right, Dr. Pugh?
I just wanted to speak to Board Member Snyder's question around the number of educators needed. I think when we go into school buildings, when we're in communities, and we're hearing what educators in, in schools are having to deal with, and maybe some of the educators around the table can speak more to this, we're talking about our children with special needs just having an educator in front of them, let alone someone with the right credentials. We're talking about students knowing that they're going to show up and have an educator in front of them, and/or a substitute. We're talking about children not being crammed into a classroom with 30-plus kids in the classroom with them. So I can understand why those numbers aren't necessarily readily available, because we're on the spectrum of what should be, and what is just the, the urgent needs, just to make sure that children are going to school, which they are required to do, and they're having educators, appropriate educators, in front of them. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder?
I, I would just add to the richness of that discussion, that I was the only board member that voted against decertifying special education teachers. So to be completely clear, I fully understand that. There's a reason why I really encourage that we not take that step as a department and as a board to support it. At the end of the day, you don't solve a teacher shortage without having that information. You absolutely have to have that information in order to understand where it fits within budgeting appropriately, and, you know, writing the right kind of policy to actually solve the issue. You have to have a baseline number.
It fluctuates from year to year, you understand that. And there's two ways to look at it. One is through the sub-permits, that we will get that number for you to refresh our memories. But the second way is, sometimes we don't know, because if I'm a district and I can't fill an art teacher, then I may try to get Ms. so-and-so to teach part art, part third grade, or, or history, or whatever, use their certification to do dual purposes. So in that case, we don't know if they were able to fill a vacancy, because they don't give us that information, they found a different alternative to hiring or covering that art class. Ms. Snyder, I see you're.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going to push back here, and this is one of the areas that I asked our new, soon-to-be state superintendent about, because it was a Democrat-led, head-to-toe legislature that changed the third-grade reading law to include the concept of submitting staffing plans at the beginning of every school year. I asked him, what do you mean by that? You know, how do you see that? First of all, he didn't support the bill to begin with, but those changes were put in place, you know, by a Democratic Senate, and the reality here is that if we're going to go off of staffing plans, and the idea that that needs to be submitted to the department to essentially determine what components of the third-grade reading law they would even be held accountable to, depending on what district it is, it doesn't even matter, right? So if you write those rules for yourselves, the sense of this is what we should do moving forward, then there is a sense that you should have an idea of what your staffing numbers look like. And how long would that take for a department to say, okay, this is exactly how many teachers we are short-ish this year, even though it fluctuates from year to year? There has to be a sense that that information is important, because it's already written into law, and this is not a law that, you know, I supported that change in particular, because I think what ends up happening is you lose the accountability around the most important components of the third-grade reading law. So how many teachers are we short-ish based on the fact that it fluctuates and the information that we currently have, that we've said this is the best way to move forward in that policy right now? I think that's a legitimate question to answer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Thank you, presenters. Our next item on today's agenda is Item D, Presentation on Computer Science. This presentation will showcase why computer science matters and how it's implemented in Michigan schools. Additionally, the presentation will address the new law requiring all Michigan high schools to offer at least one in-person computer science course by the 2027-28 school year. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Assessment, School Improvement, and System Support. And we have three members from our Office of Systems Evaluation and Technology. We have Mr. David Judd, Mr. Drew Finkbeiner, and Ms. Cheryl Wilson. Thank you so much for being here, and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell, and good morning again, Board. We are here today to update you on the status of computer science education and its related efforts here in Michigan. Before sharing the depth and breadth of our content, we would like to share the alignment of computer science education to Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan as presented and noted here on the screen. Computer science education definitely speaks to Goal 4, expand secondary learning opportunities for all students, as well as Goal 5, increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. And now Director Judd will share an overview of our discussion along with defining computer science. Dave?
Thank you, and good morning, Board. This presentation will share how Michigan is expanding access to high-quality computer science education through practice, collaboration, and policy. We will cover what is, what is computer science, why computer science matters, computer science implementation in Michigan schools, strategic collaborations, fiscal legislative support, and the statutory requirement. Computer science is defined as a study of computer and algorithmic processes, including their principles, hardware and software designs, implementation, and their impact on society. The computer science standards are grounded in five core concepts that include computing systems, which includes hardware and software, networks and internet, which includes connectivity and cybersecurity, data and analysis, algorithms and programming, which kind of covers the basics of coding, and the impacts of computing, how computers are affecting our lives. There are also practices that incorporate computational thinking and interpersonal skills, which are highly sought after by the workforce. A strong foundation in computer science prepares students for careers in emerging fields like artificial intelligence, data science, and cybersecurity, which we will explore later in the presentation, as we highlight computer science pathways that can be readily implemented as a course of study in a Michigan high school. And now Cheryl Wilson, M.D., Computer Science Education Consultant. And now Cheryl Wilson, MDE Computer Science Education Consultant, will share why computer science matters with highlights of progress here in Michigan. Cheryl.
According to Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, every learner in Michigan's public schools will have an inspiring, engaging, and caring learning environment that fosters creative and critical thinkers who believe in their ability to positively influence Michigan and the world beyond. If we are preparing our students for the world beyond, we must recognize the career pathways that many of our students will be encountering. The World Economic Forum released the 2025 Future of Jobs Report with the fastest-growing and declining jobs through 2030. Michigan's Hot 50 Job Outlook through 2032 reveals similar growing job trends. What skill sets are going to be needed by the fastest-growing jobs? What single skill set is no longer needed by the declining jobs? Let's take a deeper look at these skills on the next slide. According to the World Economic Forum's 2025 Future of Jobs Report, analytical thinking ranked as the most important skill for the third consecutive survey, highlighted by almost seventy companies as essential. Analytical thinking was sixty-nine percent, technological literacy was fifty-one percent, curiosity and lifelong learning was fifty percent, AI and big data forty-five percent, reading, writing, and mathematics twenty-one percent. While these other skills are valuable, analytical thinking helps companies navigate technological advances by applying a systematic approach to decision-making and problem-solving. As our world becomes increasingly data-driven, the complexity of decisions grows, making critical problem-solving skills like analytical thinking more essential than ever. When analytical and algorithmic thinking are combined, we refer to it as computational thinking. Computational thinking is a foundational problem-solving approach that can be taught as early as preschool and applied across all subject areas without requiring technology. The "we are computational thinkers" image illustrates the concepts and the applications that teachers can integrate into their content to help students develop computational thinking skills. In an era of rapid technological advancement, the question we must ask is this: How can we equip our students with skills that both today's and tomorrow's employers demand? Investing in development of computational thinking through our curriculum is a powerful step towards future-proofing our students for the evolving job market. Let's explore how we can teach problem-solving strategies like decomposition, pattern recognition, abstraction, and algorithmic thinking or design alongside content area learning to better equip all students. When asked which one doesn't belong, a student may respond, "with a banana," because I don't like bananas because they're mushy. Another student says, "oh, an orange," because it doesn't grow in a group. Yet another student points out, "the cherry," because it doesn't have an "A" in the word. By asking students to use decomposition, patterns, and abstraction when completing these tasks of, types of tasks associated with computational thinking, students are able to create a rule to explain their reasoning, or in a similar fashion, what we call an algorithm. Activities like this can help students develop computational thinking skills while learning other content area standards. Computational thinking is foundational for computer science, but it can also support student learning and success in other content areas. Additionally, it empowers students to engage with emerging technologies like artificial intelligence, using strong problem-solving strategies while developing metacognitive awareness to recognize how and when they are applying these strategies from their computational thinking toolbox. It doesn't require new textbooks, standards, or technology. Rather, we need to equip teachers to adapt their classroom curriculum with applications, such as the "which one doesn't belong" activity, to help students develop their computational thinking strategies. By fostering computational thinking, we provide every student, regardless of background, with a toolbox of essential skills and strategies needed to thrive in a digital world, ensuring access to learning and future career pathways. Let's shift to the topic of computer science implementation in Michigan schools. Many districts in Michigan lack a cohesive plan to implement computer science education. To better support districts, I deepen my understanding of SCRIPT, which is Strategic CS4R Resource and Implementation Planning Tool, and its alignment with the Implementation Science Model. I became a trained SCRIPT facilitator and began supporting districts in envisioning and planning for computer science implementation, starting with virtual workshops in Michigan's Upper Peninsula. One barrier to expanding computer science education is the lack of understanding among educators about the scope and the subject and its critical role in equipping students for the future careers. Through a SCRIPT launch workshop, districts bring together a team of administrators and teachers to create a vision and an actual plan for implementing computer science in their district. This plan may involve identifying curriculum resources, professional learning opportunities for educators, administrative support needs, and potential partnerships with community organizations to support district-wide implementation. Due to the success of SCRIPT, there are now three other trained facilitators, and we have led over one hundred LEAs, as shown on the map, through the SCRIPT process. One of the first schools to participate in SCRIPT process was West Ottawa Public Schools. Here is an example of their computer science and STEM pathway that was developed over several years. All of the students in grades K through five participate in a computer science special. There are elective choices in the middle school and high school with courses like App Creator, Coding and Programming, and AP Computer Science Principles. We just saw how one district is building a K-12 computer science pathway tailored to its local context. But what about a broader vision? What could computer science look like across all Michigan schools? This slide shows a sample K-12 computer science pathway based on the national framework from the K12CS.org, which helps shape Michigan's own computer science standards. It is a helpful model for districts as a plan for more comprehensive computer science learning experiences for students. According to the State of Michigan, the State of Computer Science in Michigan report that was released in 2020, the largest barrier Michigan students face is simply lack of exposure or unequal access to computer science education. That's where the new Michigan computer science law comes in. Starting in the 2027-28 school year, every public high school in Michigan will be required to offer at least one computer science course that meets or exceeds state standards. This is a major step forward. It ensures that all students, regardless of zip code, have the opportunity to explore computer science, build foundational skills, and connect with high-demand careers in fields like AI, cybersecurity, and software development. The data here highlights the percentage of high schools offering foundational computer science by school year, geography, and school size. Regarding access by school year, we see a ten percent increase in the number of high schools offering over the past three years, moving from forty-four percent in 2020-2021 to fifty-four percent in 2023-2024. The national percentage being sixty percent indicates that Michigan is moving in the right direction. There is variance in offering by geography and school size. By these areas, the department will lean in to assist urban districts and those identified as small, based on student population. We have been building, we have been developing strategic collaborations around computer science. Here are several examples showcasing the efforts to broaden K-12 computer science education implementation in Michigan. One notable example is the Western Upper Peninsula SCRIPT cohort. In 2022, I partnered with the Region 16 MySTEM Director and the Copper Country ISD Instructional Technology Consultant to lead a SCRIPT launch workshop with four local districts, guiding them through visioning and planning for computer science implementation. That initiative has since grown into a sustained regional cohort now comprising of fourteen districts. Additional collaborative efforts include the planning of the annual CS4 Michigan Education Conference that offers computer science professional learning for teachers from across the state. Strategic planning meeting involves collaboration among the following organizations: the CS4 Michigan Collaborative, which is part of the MySTEM Network, McCall, RMC, and MDE. In 2025, we had nearly two hundred attendees at the conference. Other strategic collaborations include MCWT, the Michigan Council of Women in Technology, the CS4 Detroit, and the Michigan Chapter of CSTA, the Computer Science Teachers Association. Through these collaborations, we are working to expand computer science access to Michigan students as well as teachers. And now Drew Finkbeiner, Assistant Director of OSAT, will share highlights of the fiscal and statutory support for computer science education by the Michigan Legislature. Drew?
Since the adoption of Michigan's computer science standards in 2019, there have been few sustained funding sources dedicated to implementation. The MySTEM Network's CS4 Michigan Collaborative has played a key role by offering low- or no-cost professional learning opportunities, primarily supporting educators who teach standalone computer science courses with scholarships. In 2024, Section 99B provided a one-time allocation of $4 million for computer science professional learning that supported fifty-nine districts. Those funds enabled a wide range of professional development efforts, including one district that trained its instructional coaches in computational thinking. In turn, those coaches supported all teachers in the district, creating opportunities to embed computational thinking in the district, to embed computational thinking across school classrooms and reach every student. 99B funding dropped to $500,000 in 2025. Nineteen districts were awarded funds according to legislative priorities on districts in rural and urban areas with a high proportion of students from groups historically underrepresented in computer science, as well as districts with limited or no computer science offerings. For the two years of 99B funding, over 1,680 teachers have been prepared with computer science, computational thinking, professional development, and learning, and 994 have already implemented their professional learning in their classrooms. In addition, almost 64,000 students have been reached through the two years of 99B state school aid grant funds as of June 2025. The 99B funds have been helpful for districts as they prepare for a new law requiring Michigan's public high schools to offer at least one computer science course of the 2027-28 school year. This law emphasizes the importance of access to high-quality computer science education for all students. The new law states that a computer science course must meet the following criteria. First, it must meet or exceed standards adopted by the State Board of Education in May of 2019. And second, it must be listed as an option within the school's catalog of courses. Public high schools must also make a good-faith effort to offer the course in, in an in-person setting, which includes schools that offer at least one of the following grades of nine to twelve. And now we will highlight considerations and, and resources for successful implementation. Dr. Chapman?
Thanks, Drew. As we close our time with you today, we would like to emphasize key elements and incentives for local school districts as they move towards implementation of the statutory requirement to offer, emphasizing "offer," computer science. First, all stakeholders are reminded that computer science is an elective that can count towards graduation. While the Michigan Merit Curriculum has a set number of required credits to graduate, local school districts have the autonomy to add requirements if they choose to do so. Secondly, local districts have the flexibility to shape the computer science offering as it relates to determining the course title, instructional framework, and delivery format with one parameter, which is that the flexibility components must align with the approved computer science content standards, as Drew shared, was passed in 2019 by our state The course can meet the fourth-year mathematics experience graduation requirement, which I'm sure a lot of seniors would look forward to that. And then finally, a highlight and consideration for Michigan high schools is that the computer science standards can be embedded into other subject areas, including English Language Arts, mathematics, or even in a CTE program. The embedding of the computer science standards has proven to include meaningful support and enhance learning and student engagement for both disciplines. A critical point to note here is that the CTE component should be offered within the school building the student is assigned and enrolled in, rather than a partnering standalone CTE program or center. As computer science technology concepts like cybersecurity, artificial intelligence, or AI, and quantum computing continue to advance, the Michigan Department of Education will have a laser focus on preparing our learners to have future-ready skills, as Cheryl has imparted with us today. We will focus on implementation fidelity and long-term sustainability. At a minimum, we must embed computational thinking across our schools to lay a strong foundation for all learners. Our next steps to meet these intentions include providing expanded implementation guidance to the field so that local districts understand not only what is required, but also the associated flexibilities permitted by the Michigan Merit Curriculum that I just shared with you. Secondly, we will provide and promote continuous instructional supports through professional learning, such as SCRIPT, that Cheryl shared with us, along with opportunities and direct classroom resources that strengthen learning the core concepts and principles of computer science. And last, but certainly not least, we will propose and with due diligence seek sustainable financial support as we received with 99B. Board, we appreciate this opportunity. Dr. Carnell, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Thank you, presenters. Board, are there anyone, is there anyone who has any questions or comments for the presenters?
Thank you. Thank you for this really, really rich presentation. Just looking at, I'm looking at Slides 12 and 13, and I just, I have to say, I was surprised by the, the middle bar graph. I would have expected maybe suburban districts to have that, you know, highest number of access by geography. And it was interesting that the rural districts were actually sort of leading the charge, which I thought was really interesting. And then I came to Slide 13, and I just wanted to maybe confirm my suspicion. You talked about the strategic collaborations, and I also note the specific training that you, Ms. Wilson, engaged in, which I thought was, was really, really interesting. And it occurred to me that you've got a strategic collaboration with Copper County ISD. And my first question is, might that be a reason for the rural number being sort of higher than what I would have expected? The intentional collaboration with a, with a, not only a rural district, but a district where you observed by the data it might be a computer science desert, if you will? And I think if my suspicion is correct, I think it, it might suggest that sort of intentionally looking and actually really, really embedding ourselves in those problematic districts really actually does have a real-world effect on the data that we're looking at. So that's my first question.
Would you like for her to answer?
Answer that first?
Sure. Sure.
Yes, I do think we have been working since 2020-21 and yes, trying to hit some of those districts. We know we have a lot more road to go, but I think we've seen through SCRIPT, it brings those positive conversations, and we're able to kind of meet with districts where they're at and talk about it. What resources do they currently have? What do they need to get to that next step? So it's actually very personalized, and we've been finding it very successful, as you've noted. So I think continuing that sort of process with some of the districts that we know, as you noticed on the one graph, we're seeing it is, it's a lot of small high schools, which are under 500 students, is where the struggle is probably going to be the most. And that's where, if we can start to look at some of our data and those schools, focusing on them in offering like SCRIPT or something similar, I think is going to be very helpful.
Amazing. And then I just was, was curious. So the, on Slide number 13, where you mentioned the strategic collaborations, I mean, I, I love the, the collaboration model as a way of sort of increasing department capacity. All of these different organizations, did they, I assume that they existed before your sort of training and sort of intentionality in this area? But, but that's just an assumption. Did they, did these organizations exist and you sort of helped sort of bring them together? How did that, how did that collaboration sort of evolve?
Okay. The ones that you're seeing up there, the MySTEM Network has existed, but you will notice over two to the right, the CS4 Michigan has kind of developed out of that to be able to help focus a little bit more on computer science.
Okay.
So that has kind of been developed alongside of, I would say, Script, and they've been good supporters of it. Another one that's developed since recently is the CS4 Detroit, probably a similar timeline. They've had support from the KPOR Center, which is out of, I think, Oakland, California. They've had some supports like that. But the rest are all existing organizations. And yes, it's been helpful coming into my role, this figure out, we need to be connectors. And there's a lot of stuff that was happening. How can we continue as a department to bring folks together and let's work together to support our students? And I found it very valuable. So I think we've got a lot of positive connections there, and I look forward to more collaborations.
Yeah, I just, just kudos to the model that the department has used, and I think, you know, the results are, you know, the proof is in the pudding. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lipton, any other board members? Comments or questions? Thank you, presenters.
Thank you.
The time is now 12:04, and the State Board of Education Committee of the whole will stand adjourned for lunch. We will reconvene for our regular meeting of the State Board of Education at 1:00 PM. Thank you.